Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Common Council of the City of Richmond, Indiana for December 18th, 2023. If you would please, please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your wisdom this evening as we do the business for the citizens of the city of Richmond, Indiana. We also pray for the Purple County Sheriff's Office in Purple County, Ohio, for the loss of their officer. We pray for the officer, the other individual who also was killed in the accident, as well as both of their
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Jeff Kappa.
Here.
Jeff Locke.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Ron Oler.
Here.
And Larry Parker.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the amendments of the regular meeting for December 4th, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Locke.
There's no additions or corrections. Make a motion to approve the amendments of December 4th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and approval. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is presentations of petitions, memorials, or complaints, introductions, motions, and resolutions. I do not see any on the agenda, so we'll move forward. Next is communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Upcoming event this week, I want to remind everybody about the Townsend Community Dinner and Giveaway. That is this Friday, December 22nd, at the National Guard Armory on West Main Street, and that will take place from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The community is not only invited to attend, but it's also a great volunteer opportunity if you would like to pitch in and help out this holiday season. And lastly, from me, just wishing you all and everybody at home and across the city a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Same you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is report of the Board of Public Works and Safety. The amendments should have been included in your packets from November 16th and November 30th. Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move forward. We do not have any reports from department heads, do we, Mayor? Sure. Okay. Or standing committees. Next is miscellaneous business. We have the Tourism Bureau Board of Appointments.
Everybody has the name of them. They just want to know if you want to add anybody, I think.
That is correct. Thank you. Did we have any other suggestions from the members of council? If not, then I'll entertain a motion. Who's first again?
Nina Patel and...
I'm sorry?
Dana Wyble. And Patel. I didn't bring it with me. I figured everybody had it.
I move to approve the current appointments, renew their appointments for the upcoming year.
Second.
Okay. Yes. All right. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is ordinances on the first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and advance and read ordinance 57-2023 and 59-2023 by title only.
Did you include 55-2023 as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Ordinance number 55-2023, an appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 44-2023, known as the 2024 salary ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Emily Palmer, City Controller. Ordinance 55-2023 corrects a number of Scribner's errors on the original ordinance 44-2023. An updated template was used that did not include the building maintenance position or the Human Resources Department. Those have been added. The maintenance supervisor position for the Parks Department has been removed, and the number of social workers in the Fire Department has been updated to four. There are also two title changes in the mayor's office. The mayor's office coordinator becomes the executive administrative coordinator, and the financial compliance coordinator becomes the grant administrator. All of these amendments have been accounted for in the 2024 budget where applicable. Additionally, the salaries for the police chief and majors have been updated to account for the approval of the most recent FOP contract, which provides a 1.5% increase in salary for 2024 and 2025. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Emily? Counsel's pleasure.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oler.
The Finance Committee was not able to meet. We had a different executive session, but I moved that we advance this to second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Ordinance number 55-2023, an appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 44-2023, known as the 2024 civilian salary ordinance.
Okay.
Get that out.
Thank you. Okay, well now this opens us up for public hearing. Call for speakers in support of the ordinance. Calling for speakers in support of the ordinance. We will call for speakers in opposition to the measure. Again, calling for anyone in opposition to the measure?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Call the question.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
And Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
All are in favor. Ordinance number 57-2023, appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 34-2023, known as the annual compensation and benefits of Richmond police officers.
Good evening.
Emily.
Hello. Ordinance 57-2023 amends ordinance 34-2023 to accommodate the recent approval of the FOP's 2024 and 2025 contract, which provides a 1.5% non-compounding salary increase for both years. Happy to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Okay. Any questions for Emily on this particular ordinance, 57-2023?
Mr. President.
Mr. Oler.
Same comments. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I recommend we move this to second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
Ordinance number 57-2023, an appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 34-2023, known as the annual compensation and benefits of Richmond police officers.
It will now open us up for public hearing. Calling for speakers in support of the ordinance. Calling for speakers in support of the ordinance. We will now call for speakers in opposition to the measure. Calling for speakers who are in opposition to the measure.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
And Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
All are in favor. Ordinance number 59-2023, an appropriation ordinance amending ordinance number 35-2023, known as the 2024 sanitary salary ordinance.
Okay, last one, I promise. Ordinance 59-2023 corrects a Scribner's error in ordinance 44-2023, removing a landfill truck driver and a processor B as planned in the 2024 budget to accommodate the addition of two additional Class A operators. All positions have been accounted for appropriately in the 2024 budget. Happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to this ordinance.
Thank you, Emily. Does anyone have any questions for Emily over this ordinance?
No. Mr. President.
Mr. Oler.
A comment. Thank you, Controller Palmer, for getting all these things corrected before the end of the year. I'm sure they'll appreciate it come January, 1st of January. Move for, move this to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa.
Aye. Thank you. Having other ordinances on their first reading, we now move to ordinances on the second reading.
Ordinance number 40-2023, a special ordinance creating Chapter 63 of the Richmond City Code for the establishment of designated refreshment area subject to findings, regulations, and guidelines.
Very much. Now open us up to public hearing. We call for speakers in support of this ordinance. Calling for speakers in support of this ordinance. We'll call for speakers in opposition to this measure.
David Carpenter, 400 Richmond Avenue. And so, before addressing my opposition to ordinance, can you tell me, upon your study of this ordinance, what implications could have a negative impact to our community that you have found in establishing this ordinance?
Mr. Carpenter, the opportunity for you to speak tonight in opposition to the measures, for you to speak to us and tell us why you feel that this ordinance should not be enough for us to explain to you why that is. Your position this evening and under this ruling is for you to tell us why you are against or why you oppose this ordinance being passed.
Well, my research I have seen has some bad implications that can have as far as people being toxified, drunk driving and stuff. And because my concerns on that aspect, I am opposed to ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Carpenter? Okay, hearing none. One more time, we'll call for speakers in opposition to the measure.
President Kappa.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I am a volunteer at Cross Road Christian Recovery Center for Women, a drug and alcohol recovery center. I've been there for almost eight years volunteering, and I have some family members who are recovering alcoholics. So due to conscience, I will be voting against this ordinance.
Thank you, Mrs. Bumbalo.
Mr. President, do we have a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee on this matter?
We do. We, after looking at this and going forward with this, it was the position of the Safety Committee to go ahead and move forward on second reading. Okay. Anyone else? What is the counsel's pleasure?
Move for engrossment.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes.
There are some proposed modifications out of the Public Safety Committee, so you may want to hear those before it's engrossed.
Would you, Mr. Sigmund, be happy to do that for me?
Be happy. So if we start, excuse me, on page seven and section five, you'll see a redlined addition. This states that it may be required that bottles or cups be affixed with a logo that identifies the container for use only in the refreshment area. And then the added language states, and in addition, a logo that identifies the identity of the permutee. And then if we flip to page eight, section eight, at the bottom of the page, it states that designated permittees and vendors shall comply with all applicable public health and safety requirements established by the ordinance and also incorporated into Richmond City Code, Chapter 63. But we add to that the language, as well as all provisions of the Indiana Criminal Code, and if such compliance is not achieved, the city reserves the right to proceed under any applicable procedures as may be outlined by the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission for revocation of a permit. Additionally, the Richmond Police Department has authority to track all relevant data pertaining to this section and may issue recommendations to the city administration pertaining to a pattern of violations of any permutee. So those were the proposed modifications that came out of the Public Safety Committee. So what is being requested at this time is that prior to any engrossment, that a motion be made to modify this ordinance consistent with that which I explained into the record this evening.
Just for point of clarification, AJ, also, on number eight, if the Excise Police came in and they found violations and reported that to the Richmond Police, that would be sufficient for them to move forward?
Certainly would, yes.
Any further questions about those amendments that have been made to this particular document on ordinance 40-2023?
Mr. President, a move that we accept those amendments?
Second.
For motion and a second. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for engrossment. Madam Clerk, excuse me. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Got ahead of myself.
Somebody has to call for the question.
Call the question.
Second.
Second. Just for point of clarification, we voted on the engrossment, and we do have a point of question. Call the question. So.
We did.
You're good to go.
Okay. That's what I wrote. Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
No.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
No.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
No.
And Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
Six to three in favor of. Ordinance 41, 2023, special ordinance designating Adora as a depot Dora pursuant to the Richmond City Code, Chapter 63.
Thank you. Okay, open us up for public hearing. Call for speakers in support of the ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Adam Elton. I'm with the Cordial Cork Restaurant and Bar down in the Depot District. I'm also one of the executive officers of the Depot Association. We've been, we've been looking at this, this ordinance for quite a few months now, and we've been working with the Safety Committee on, on all of the, the rules that go along with this. With owning a restaurant and serving alcohol in there, I have the unfortunate pleasure of dealing with the Alcohol and Tobacco Commission all the time. It's, it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of regulation, and for good reason. They, they make sure that, that they mind their Ps and Qs. And, and if you don't, they will take away your license. And as a business owner, that, that license is, is everything to my business. I would never do anything that would compromise that and get that taken away. That being said, I know that there are other business owners in the depot that are like-minded. This, this ordinance would, would not only help us out when it comes to events, but it could also potentially bring other events to the depot district, because it's just easier to be able to, to plan these events in short time, rather than having to pull special event permits, getting them approved within a certain bounds. A couple examples, we do a wine walk where five different businesses in the depot will kind of work together. We'll do, we'll do a wine tasting at each place, and people will walk to each, each place, and it gets people into those businesses that they've not been before. Right now, with the event permits that we have to pull, I would have to pull five different permits, one for each of those locations, and then those, those folks are not allowed to leave that, those premises until they've finished their wine. So a lot of times what you have is, is, is people in there trying to chug their wine before they can leave, which makes it not very fun and a little less safe. The Dora allows them more time, more room to breathe, and more room to, to walk around. Other, other cities, you know, they include 20, 30 blocks for their ordinance. We're just, we're just looking at two or three blocks total. So it's, it's a small map. Things like Oktoberfest, where you have a beer garden, a lot of vendors, when they, when they come in and sign up to be a vendor, a lot of times, they'll, they'll want to be near the beer garden, because that's where the concentrated, you know, that's where they get all their eyes. They make a lot more sales if they're near the beer garden. Whereas if we were able to walk around and people weren't corralled into one tiny little spot, the vendors that are involved in a, in a festival like that would actually do better as well. So again, I'm in support of, of this ordinance, and I for one, along with a few other ones, will not do anything to, to get this taken away or to lose our permit as a business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, calling for speakers in support of the ordinance.
I'm Tracy Robinson. I'm also one of the executive offers of the Depot District Association. And as Adam said, we've spent a lot of time thinking about this, planning. Ed Delapaz has spent a lot of time helping us with the maps and condensing the map, in fact, and working on the signage that each business would have on their doors, allowing alcohol to be inside their building or not. We have also committed to having trainings regularly for owners and bartenders, anyone that would be serving the alcohol, to make sure that they understand all of these regulations as well. So that will be something that we will do as well. And I think that having the names on the cups will be a great factor for us to be able to track some of this, too. It's an all-new theory. It's an all-new concept to us as well. And as Adam said, we have no desire to abuse it. We would like to keep it kind of low-key, actually. So I'm in support of it, as well as our other officers of our Depot District Association and the other members in the district that are restaurant or bar, or bar owners.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is this every weekend, or is it just certain times, certain events?
I believe it can be every weekend. That is not our intent. Our intent is to do it specific weekends. We really prefer the word "not" to get out that it could be every weekend. We would like some just on special occasions.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one last call for speakers in support of the ordinance.
Greetings. My name is Ed Delapaz. So I do the marketing for the Depot District for several years. So a couple of things, I helped design, put together this packet for the door. I did a lot of the groundwork to determine what's been done. Every state around Indiana has doors working, and they've been working excellent. There's not really been any major concern, or else we would have said, no, that's not something we want to do. Something else I do want to note is that with the Dora, it's, it's two cups. It's, it's two designated drinks. That's part of it. But also, what I've seen from doing all these events and being at every single event for the past four years that's happened in the Depot District, one thing that always happens is that people will get their drinks, and then they will kind of just go out and be a part of the community as is. So this adds another layer and more identification on the signage. So when people enter the door, they know they're entering a door. When they leave the door area, they know they're leaving it. Each business will be designated with a sign. If they want to be part of the door, they have the option, or they all have the option of, of not being. So this provides a couple more tools, and it'll be able to kind of say, hey, this is what we expect in the Depot District, and this is what we're aiming for. So I see it as, this is not open container. This is, gives us ability to kind of say, this is what we expect from people who come down to the depot. And rather than having the Oktoberfest stage, a block, one block, and then literally across the alleyway on Elm Place, you have Cordial Cork, where they have to set up their own beer garden. So what we're doing is we're really just removing those type of little tiny barriers. We're not saying people, come down to the depot, grab a drink, and then walk all the way to the south side. That is not what we're looking at. We are looking at just the area that's within the door zone itself. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Adam reminded me that our intent is Thursday, Friday, Saturday on those special events, and it would only be from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM. And then we would not, then we would pull back on that as soon as 10 o'clock PM is there.
Mr. President. Mr. Engel. So you don't have tentative dates for when you would want to have special events?
We, yes, tentative. We typically do a wine walk in the spring, and then we were doing First Fridays in the summertime with vendors, and that could still happen. And then, of course, Oktoberfest, and then we just had a Christmas festival. So probably those, it would, it would parallel with those. Occasionally, we might have a different event that comes up that is unplanned, but most of the time, they would be planned ahead of time.
Okay. And First Fridays would be the first of the month?
Yes, the first Friday. That was typically when we did our wine walks and had vendors.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any further questions? Thank you, Tracy. We'll now call for speakers in opposition to the measure.
David Carpenter, 400 Richmond Avenue. My opposition comes from my concerns of what might implement on officers and other personnel that might have to be present to oversee it all, and due to the enormous stress they're experiencing with the lack of personnel, that is why I have an opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Going again for speakers that are in opposition to the measure?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I, yeah, once again, it's for conscience sake that I will be voting against this.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Bumbalo.
You're welcome.
Any further comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gross.
I want to comment on the process that we, as the Public Safety Committee, took towards this. This is kind of like the ideal situation as far as collaboration and, you know, the way the, it really should work. You know, it's the Depot Association that brought this to us, that they were interested in it. But they also brought along their concerns. You know, they, they have a lot of the same concerns that all the citizens have. They, the, you know, people leaving the Dora area, the trash, you know, they brought up those concerns, and we worked to try to figure out how we can address those concerns. There was a lot of research that went into this. There was a lot of input sought from police chief and the future police chief. So a lot went into this. A lot of meetings went into this, and a lot of effort by a lot of people. And that's really how the, this process should work. And I will definitely be voting for this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President. I'm going. Mrs. Wright.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say, I'm excited about the Dora. I have experienced participating at a Dora in Memphis, the famous Bill Street, and New Orleans. And I am, I, this is in my district, so it's, you know, where Richmond is growing. So, and I, as Doug said, I know they had some concerns, because I've attended a meeting or two with them, but I do, I commend you all on all of the research and the thought and the collaborations and so forth that you have put into this. So I'm excited. Thank you for what you did and what you brought to us. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, I'll add one thing here.
Yes, sir.
We also talked about, you know, if, if things don't go well, the fact that all it takes is a ordinance to rescind this ordinance. to rescind this ordinance to do completely away with the door. And that can be done very quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Engel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wonder if there is a plan from our police department about handling these events. Will there be additional officers on duty or in, in the designated area? Chief, if you could help us. Or even if, if that's necessary, I don't even know.
Mr. President, Ms. Grangle. The police department will be involved with this. I don't see it as being a constant draw on our resources. Obviously, it will have to do with the size of the event. We have no intention of babysitting these, these occasions. They're going to be event-specific. We will respond as needed to individual problems. One of the most important things that was accomplished through this Safety Committee was giving the police department a, a voice that wasn't mentioned in a state statute to where we can have input into the future of doors if there's a continuing problem, if it becomes a strain on our resources, that type thing. And as well as some of the other language changes involving the source of the cup. Those things satisfied all of my concerns. But I don't see it as being a drain on our resources. If it is, that's when you'll hear from the police department regarding the other process that we can put into place.
Chief, does that mean that there will be officers assigned to these events?
No.
No? Okay.
Obviously, if it's a large event, that will require officers. But the standard, again, it depends on the size of it. And we don't want to create something here that will be a continuous drain on, on the manpower of the police department.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We take, but I would like to comment, being part of the Safety Committee, all of us on this council are concerned for the safety of our citizens in the city of Richmond. I also did my due diligence by reaching out to other police departments in other states and in Indiana that have the Dora and speaking with them to see if they had any concerns since they've had the program in place. And I had no negative comments shared with me by those other police departments. I've spoken with Chief Britt, and I've also spoken with the future chief that'll be coming in under the new mayor. With that being said, I had to give this a lot of thought. And all of you know that safety is a very main concern in my life for almost 43 years. But after speaking with the two, the chief and then the new chief that's coming in, I'll be voting in favor of this particular ordinance because I have full confidence, full confidence, that they'll be able to handle this and know what to do.
Mr. President, do you mind if I ask the other communities that you polled?
Reached out to Lawrenceburg, Indiana.
Approximately our size?
Yes. Yeah, not really, but similar. Closest one, they were the closest one to us that actually has one.
Okay.
And I've also spoken to the agencies here in Ohio that have one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
A motion and a second to engross. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Same sign if you oppose. Hearing none, motion is approved.
Call the question.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
No.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bubalo.
No.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
No.
And Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
Six-three again in favor.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. We do? Okay, before we do that, can I say something? This is my last meeting on council, and I wanted to thank each and every one of you on the council that I've had the opportunity to serve with the last four years. It's been an enjoyable time with all of you. I am very grateful that I feel that in the city of Richmond, under the current political climate across the nation, that all of us have worked together in a non-biased way. And quite frankly, I call you all my friends, and I'm going to miss each and every one of you. Been you, Gary.
My mom did, too.
Okay. I'd also like to wish all the new incoming council members, office, department heads, everyone else, best of luck and a happy Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I wish the city of Richmond the best. I know it's in good hands, so thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Locke.
This also is my last meeting. It's been an honor to serve the 5th District for the last eight years. It's been a pleasure to work with Mayor Dave, Clerk Karen, A.J., Emily. It's, it's been wonderful to work with everybody. It's been great working with everybody up here on this podium as well as Jamie and Bruce, Clay and Misty from my first term. So I wish everybody the best of luck and have a good time.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I will say that I will miss both of you very much. I've appreciated all your help through the past four years. And I think we've worked together as a, a team, and that's really important to me. I also want to thank the mayor for everything he's done. He, he's supported our parks. He's supported our employees, supported our businesses, supported our veterans, and, and made this a better community. You've left this a better community than when you arrived. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say that I'm going to miss you and Jeff.
Me?
You and Jeff and, and Mayor Snow these last two years. I've learned a lot from you all. And I thank you for putting up with me, Dave. And, and Jeff, I've learned, Jeff Locke, I've learned a lot from you and, and you as well. President Kappa, when I go way back, way back. So, but I, I want to say thank you to you all. I'm going to miss you all, but you haven't seen the last of me. Even though you guys are not.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to also say I'm going to miss everybody. Just looking around the room, and Dave, you, you've done a good job, and you have great parents. I've enjoyed seeing them over the years, and they, they are wonderful people. And I just very thankful and, and very thankful for Jeff Locke. Jeff Locke, we went on a trip together, and we had the most horrible plane ride ever, my very first trip with council. It was so bad that the stewardess hit the top of the airplane and landed in the seat in back of us, and they had to grab onto her. I grabbed onto his arm so tight and just started praying. And I'll never forget that. He'll never forget that either. But it has been. But it's been a joy, and I just, I have, I, I just think that this has been an awesome group of people to work with. Everybody has just really rallied together. And I'm, I'm just very thankful, thankful.
Okay, well, we have a motion to adjourn. Oh, we have not got a motion to adjourn. I think I've had all the wind stolen out of the great speech I had to give. So I'll have to keep it short. And I'm just very glad that I'm the person who gets to hand you this.
There you go.
Because I've certainly enjoyed your company, and I'll miss you.
Yeah.
And don't hit your wife with that, please. You're a great guy. Thank you. I'll miss you. I'm sure we can do that. And Mr. Oler, I look forward to working with you. This commemorates your time on the council. Time well spent. So I wish I had a clack to hold to you because I owe you equally as much as I do the rest of you. And best of luck to you.